United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was April Fool's.
I was gonna say.
The best I can do. All right. No, I'm having trouble. There we go. First thing we're going to have the opportunity to hear about today is the Life After High School Program with Tim Abram. So, Tim, thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mayor Motts, and to all of our city commissioners, city manager, and to all of our leaders in your respective positions. On behalf of the Lakeland Police Athletic Activities League, I would like to take this time to thank you for giving us the opportunity to shed light on some of the positive things that we're doing here in our community. I guess start it with a video.
I promise it did work Friday before Kevin touched it. Here we go.
My name is Kendall Carson.
My name is Martez Po.
My name is Lakeisha Johnson.
My name is Ruben Trevino.
My name is Tim Abram. I'm the executive director for the Lakeland Police Athletic League Chapter. We have about 12 programs. We're a crime prevention program where we offer crime prevention services to kids here in our community.
Hey, I'm Lacey, and I've been in PAL for a year. And PAL has affected me in many ways. I've met a lot of new people. My favorite moment was when we were at Twompanee and Mr. Tim said, "You need to be a cheerleader."
My name is Mario Ford. I've been in PAL for four years. What inspired me to come to PAL was my friend that came here, but he graduated, and Mr. Tim helped him graduate. And some things I like about PAL is when we go skating, bowling, college tours, things like that.
My name is Kendall Carson. I'm 13 years old. One thing I like about PAL is Officer Preston goes in a van, and he always does great checks. And the second thing I like about PAL that is fun, and I can meet new friends and stuff.
Hello, my name is Martez Po. I'm 12 years old, and I have been in the PAL program for like a year now. Remember, as soon as you step into the PAL building, it's like stepping into a whole new adventure, meeting new people, going to places. And remember, we're filling playgrounds, not prisons.
Hi, my name is Lakeisha Johnson. I've been in PAL for two years. I did cheerleading and mentoring program. What inspired me to come to PAL was Charisse and Teriah telling me about PAL and what do we do in PAL. For the summer program, what we do is we visit colleges so we can be someone in life and graduate from college.
My name is Ruben Trevino, and I've been in PAL for about a year and a half now. This year, we'll be going to Atlanta, Georgia. It'll be my first out-of-town trip. I've actually learned about PAL through football, which they have a really, really great football program. And Mr. Tim was on and on that I come to the Wednesday program. And then from the Wednesday program, I loved it so much, I wanted to do the summer program. And if I were you, I'd really invest your child's time into the program. It's very, it has a lot of opportunities, a lot of scholarships will be given out, a lot of college trips. You really have a variety. I've actually already seen a college that I would love to go to. And if I were you, like I said, really invest your child.
We're out here having a car wash with our team mentoring program. Kids ages 13 through 18, they're washing cars, they're trying to raise dollars for their educational historical tour in Alabama and also Atlanta, Georgia. PAL is near and dear to my heart. It gives me an opportunity to help equip teens and also kids actually ages 4 through 18 so that they can grow up and be productive citizens in their life. Welcome to PAL. Please join if you want to come out. You can reach us. Our phone number is 863-834-2556. I look to see you soon. Thank you.
Good job on that one.
Thank you. I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce some of our wonderful staff. Charisse Chamberlain and Rakim Rutherford is both our program coordinators, and Officer Fred Lewis is officer assigned to PAL. Also, our board of directors, we have our chair board of our board here, Bishop Forehand. And I thought I saw Ms. Annie Fowles. As you can see, we have quite a list of board members who help us do great things here in our community. PAL mission, one of the things I want to talk about when you talk about the mission of PAL. PAL is the largest and only law enforcement-based juvenile crime prevention program in the world. A lot of times, people don't know that history. We are the largest and only juvenile crime or law enforcement-based juvenile crime program in the world, where we're filling playgrounds and not prisons. Lakeland PAL started here in 1993 with just a few children and one officer. Today, we serve over 1,500 kids in our community, and we have over 150 volunteers to assist us in 14 programs that we now have. As you can see, PAL serves kids ages 4 through 18. Football and cheer are our largest programs. While we have seen numbers in our aftercare and mentoring program increase, but due to the capacity of our building space, we have had to cut numbers. We had about 125 kids in aftercare. We cut that down to 55. And also in mentoring, we had about 175, and we had to cut that down to about 55 kids because of the capacity of our building space. Moving from Simpson Park over to the current spot. As you can see, these are the 14 programs that we're talking about. Fishery and archery is a new program that we just start providing. We want to meet kids from all walks of life. We know that every kid in our community don't like sports, and they want to be affiliated and many other activities. So, we're trying to meet the needs of every child that comes to us and not turn them away. As you can see, this is our aftercare program where we provide transportation, a healthy snack, and dinner, and then mentoring and tutoring. A lot of kids that come to our program are coming from single-parent homes where parents are getting off real late. So, we added the dinner component so that if the kids are still there, right around 5 o'clock, we start feeding them dinner at that time. As you can see, this is our team program. Kids learn life skills training, community service projects. Here, they're actually preparing a meal here to feed the homeless residents in our community at our local tabith house. This is just one of the colleges, Florida State University, that we visited through our summer team program. This is a program that's funded. We have to hit the ground running and get donations because we don't receive any funding from the city to run our summer programs. Cheer program. Our cheer program serves about 175 kids cheerleaders each year. As you can see, I brought the Spirit Cup with us. Normally, when we go to the cheer competition in Daytona Beach, we have about 20 PAL chapters throughout the state of Florida, and we normally come home in first place. And so, you can see here in the pictures where it's just a takeover. You know, a lot of cities, Miami and Jacksonville, they wonder how can Lakeland, you know, with just over 100,000 residents, can bring that many parents and kids to a cheer program. As you can see, our football program here also is a real, real good program. We normally have about 210 kids that we keep off the street, boys, that is, from the months of July to December. We keep them pretty busy. As you can see, the uniforms that they have, I know y'all probably heard of our car wash fundraiser that we raised $10,000. The kids get to keep the uniforms. One of the things that we've noticed that when you're working with at-risk kids, it's very important to make sure that they look the part. A lot of times, they feel good, they normally do well in school and also in life. We just implemented our travel basketball program. Our girls just won state again. We should be in the paper here. Just last weekend, we went to the State of Florida PAL Basketball Tournament, and our girls placed first in the state of Florida. So, we're doing a lot of wonderful things in our programs. Volunteers and staff are doing a great job. I want to take this time to thank our corporate sponsors because this is the lifeline. As you know, PAL is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization where we receive limited funding from the city in the ballpark range of about $42,000, but we still have to raise about $280,000, $80,000. And so, the corporate sponsors that you see here, public charities, GiveWell Foundation, Salto Creek, we really thank them for all of the support that they've been giving to Our projected budget for 2019, as you can see, $263,000 from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund, as I was sharing with you. We received $42,000 from the city, and the rest is through donations, registrations, and grants that we have to bring in. These are some of the PAL successes. The grand opening of Cook Park, if you see this picture here, where you see NFL star, Hall of Famer Ray Lewis, and myself and a couple of kids, and now home to the Lakeland PAL Hurricanes, Cook Park is where we reside. These are PAL kids that have went on to do great things. As you can see, Tiffany Hayes is still in the women's NBA today. Dwayne Bacon, he still plays for Charlotte Hornets, been doing pretty good as well. And then also Ahmaud Black, who used to play for the Tampa Bay Buccaneers, all PAL kids. Teens on the rise. We just wanted to show you some of the kids from our team mentoring program that are hitting the books, they're coming. These are the kids, we got a lot of kids, but these are the kids that come often. I mean, they're there every week, you know, trying to get their GPA up, and they're trying to get enrolled into a good college. And so, we just want to kind of shed light on some of the GPAs and the hard work that Lakeland PAL program stats. I want you to take a look here. We normally have between, like I say, 55 and 175 kids throughout a year's time to come through our mentoring program. 100% of those kids that come through, we track to see whether or not they graduate from high school. If you can look from 2013 all the way to 2018, we have 100% rate of our kids that participate in our mentoring program that graduate from high school. Now, 2014 was the year that I really, really was very happy. We had about 27 kids in that program, 27 seniors in that program, and we had about 80% of them who graduated from college already. So, these were kids that we got in the program, we took them on college tours, we motivated them, we brought in guest speakers, and we gave them help with the SAT, ACT, and they went to college, and now they're graduating. So, that's a great success story. Now, we want to shed light on some of the kids that just currently graduated from college or getting ready to graduate in this Life After High School piece.
Hello, everyone. My name is Quini Shiraz. I'm a current fourth-year senior at the University of Florida. I will be graduating this spring with my bachelor's in public health. I do plan to pursue my education, receiving my bachelor's in nursing, and also my master's in healthcare administration. I am a first-generation college student, so this is a great opportunity that I'm just very excited. And just thank you to Lakeland PAL for being able to set the foundational skills for me to be able to be the person that I am today.
The Police Athletic League showed me different colleges around the United States, including University of Florida, Louisiana State University, University of South Carolina, et cetera. And that basically helped mold me into taking my grades more seriously so that I could possibly have a chance at going to college one day.
While I was interested in pediatric care and being a doctor before PAL, one of the big things that they did do was going to visit colleges. So, that was one thing that I didn't really get to do on my own. My family, only two members of my family had gone to college beforehand, so I was going to be number three. So, getting to visit different colleges out of state was kind of cool. So, that was something that was really important. One of the colleges that we visited actually was University of South Florida, which is where I ended up going.
I definitely wouldn't have had the chance and opportunity to visit as many universities across the United States without the Police Athletic League.
I was able to be a cheerleading coach throughout my high school years, and also part of the youth leadership development program in which I was able to develop communication skill, professionalism, time management skills, just different things that really helped set me apart when I did get to college because people actually invested their time and wanted to see success.
I remember before we went to each colleges, especially out of the state, where we would get our hair done for the girls and nails done and all this stuff to really show us how to look presentable when we went out. And I thought that was pretty interesting.
PAL helped me earn a full scholarship, athletic scholarship, to North Carolina Agriculture and Technical State University, where I earned first-team all-conference defensive back and also HBC All-American cornerback.
I did four years at USF. I did a double-degree program in biomedical sciences and health sciences with a concentration in biological health and health management.
Sports, the team mentoring program, and also serving the community helped keep me off the streets and helped mold me into a better person.
So, right now, I am preparing for medical school. I am currently studying for the MCAT, which is the entrance exam for medical school. During my time with studying, I am a nanny. So, I work right now raising kids. I want to be a pediatrician, so I guess you can see the link between pediatric care and being a nanny. So, that's kind of what I do right now. It's my full-time gig as I prepare for the next step.
Thank you, coaches, staff, and PAL mentors for shaping me into the man that I am today.
I just want to say thank you for all the mentors that were out there when I was in high school about nine years ago. So, I appreciate your work.
Thank you again to Mr. Tim and everyone who supports the Lakeland PAL program, whether it's with the volunteers, the coaches, the faculty. Thank you to you all because of you, we have success stories from Lakeland, Florida.
Also, we have National PAL Mentoring Day coming up. It's going to be on April 27. One of the reasons why we put on National PAL Mentoring Day is to get as many youth organizations together to partner with us to set up for registration information to give to parents so that during the summer months, when juvenile crime tends to spike high, they'll have a place to go. So, we invite Boys and Girls Club, Girls Inc., any youth organization that you might know of that can come and provide information. That's the reason why we have Mentoring Day. Wrap-up Q and A. Any questions that you may have?
All right. Any questions from the question, yes, or comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Tim, first off, I think you guys do a fantastic job. I know you guys work hand-in-hand with our Parks and Rec Department in moving from Simpson Park over to your new facility has allowed you to do different things. In regards to the after-school program, you are only able to serve...
55. Yeah, we actually had 125 when we were at Simpson Park Community Center. But once we moved into our new location in 2015, we had to reduce those numbers to, because we were at a cap right at 55 at the new facility we're in now, or the current place.
Okay. Where do those other 75 kids go that used to...
Well, we had to refer them to other programs. And one of the things that we did run into, there's a lot of police officers who retired here in the state of Florida, and they prefer the kids to go to PAL instead of other programs because they were in, you know, law enforcement, you know, maybe in another city or another state. And so, we did kind of have some resistance with some of those parents. We were telling them that, you know, we reached the cap and that we can't take anymore.
I know that the city of Lakeland is a portion of your funding, and you got other community support. But in regards to the additional programs that you're offering, do you think at some point a discussion needs to be had about expanding your facility so you're able to accommodate more kids, especially if you're growing programs with fishery and archery, that's all across on there, and then maybe some other sports or activities that you may add to attract more kids? So, you're going to need more space.
Yes. You know, with our population growing, we're over 100,000 now within our city. And those talks need to be, you know, yesterday actually, about, you know, what are our plans, a timeline to provide additional space, resources that will keep up with the times? Because now Lakeland is steadily growing, and I know you know that as well, but kids are coming. And one of the things that we don't want to do is start turning kids back to the street. I don't know if you remember the situation that happened in Baltimore when they had so many PAL programs, and they just got rid of all of them. And then all of a sudden, they had a situation that kind of got out of hand, and they had one guy that come on, and he was speaking, and this guy was a known criminal. And he got on the television set and said, "If you wouldn't have gotten rid of the PALs, you had 3,000 kids off the street, and you decided to sell all your vans, get rid of all your facilities, and turn those kids back into the street." And this is the reason why we have today.
Well, I noticed, I took a quick glance of your board of directors, you have pretty influential folks on your board. And so, I would hope that, I know Bob Donahue is on your board of directors, and so hopefully at some point in the near future, you could maybe have a recommendation from your board on a future vision that hopefully I'm still around to support. But I'm sure my colleagues would look forward to being able to help wherever we can to help grow that program.
Thank you. We look forward to it.
Any other comments? That's Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Tim, and the staff and all for what you do. I think it goes without saying, we see success, you know, with PAL program in the number of years it's been here in our community. I noticed you did not have the Poussey Twins and what they give and what they support.
Well, one of the things that, you know, Poussey Twins, we do a Poussey Twins camp. We've had, before the Poussey Twins got with us, I think they were having about 400 kids. And when we started partnering with them to do that program, we reached about 1,500 kids. Now, we provide most of the services for the Poussey Twins camp. There's a big misunderstanding. We provide any kind of service. We provide all of the footballs, all of the, everything that you can think. I think the only thing that we don't provide is just the T-shirts. And PAL provides everything else. So, we're not receiving any funds from the Poussey Twins.
All they do is they come out, do...
They come up and show up, and we already have everything organized for them, and they provide T-shirts.
It's good to know because people think, that's why I brought it up. People think that they're doing this big particular day with all these 1,500, you know, young people out there, and it's still PAL that's doing it, or those that support PAL and giving their sponsorships, et cetera, are the ones that are doing it.
Yes, we're the one that's doing 90% of the work.
And that's what people need to hear. So, thank you for sharing that because people need to understand that and their giving and their contributions, you know, what PAL still need to have support when it's doing. And again, thank you for all you're doing, supporting. And of course, what Commissioner Walker was saying, as we move forward, we'll see how best still, you know, what can be provided to help support the organization as a whole.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other comments? Yeah, I would echo that mentoring is hugely important, and you're doing it, and we are grateful for it. And so, as it can grow, we'd be excited to come alongside. So, thanks for all you're doing now currently, and thanks for a great presentation.
Thank you.
Next, I think we're going to have a presentation by the Rotary Club, Clubs in rural. So, all of those here for that purpose, come forward.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager, others, ladies and gentlemen. For 15 years, the Rotary Clubs in Lakeland have been conducting their Twilight 5K Run to raise money for construction and maintenance of the Common Ground Park. Over $400,000 has been raised and donated by Rotary to the city of Lakeland for that park. This annual event is a combined effort organized by the four clubs with Parks and Recreation Department and the many sponsors who contribute to the event's success. At this time, it's our pleasure to donate the $12,000 proceeds from the 2019 run to the Common Ground Park Maintenance and Endowment Fund.
Come on up, Matt. Come up the steps. and all of that, and the continuing contributions as well. Thank you. Well, now we move to beautification awards, and Connie is going to make that presentation for residential and commercial winner of the month. There you go, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Fellow Lakelanders. My name is Connie Haynes, and this is Lillian Blessing. And we are both on the board, beautification board, and that was actually established in 1966. And the whole concept of that is to recognize people, not only residential but commercial, that continue to make Lakeland a beautiful place. We meet once a month at Bill Cohen's office, and there's actually, I believe, seven of us on the board, and we represent different districts out of the city. And our job is to drive around and to find commercial and residential facilities that we feel is really exemplary and recognize them. The first one is the Residential Beautification Award. This beautification award is presented to Erasto and Marilyn Bobette on April 1st, 2019, in recognition of the outstanding contribution made to the beauty of Lakeland through improvements at the following residential property, and that's 833 Channing Road. They are not able to be present today. However, we will give them a placate that goes on, first of all, they will receive this in recognition, and also a board that goes on their yard for the full month. And Lillian?
This beautification award is for the commercial, and it goes to the Lakeland Country Club, which if you paid any attention, they've been doing lots of work over there. And Mr. Morales is here to accept the award, and he's going to tell us all that they've been doing.
Thank you very, very much. It's quite an honor. Thank you. Makes it a little bit easier when you have a beautiful facility and a background like Lake Hollingsworth. But on behalf of the membership and my staff and my team, we'd like to thank you for this award, for the acknowledgement, and hopefully we can continue to provide a beautiful backdrop to that Lake Hollingsworth community area. We've got some great things planned for the club. Obviously, the club has been gone for a few years, so it feels good to be back. And on a personal note, I have relocated here from Atlanta, Georgia. And on a personal note, I have relocated here from Atlanta, Georgia, six months ago. Lakeland is now home, and I love it here. Today was a prime example of what this place is.
There you go.
So thank you very much.
Coming up this weekend, on April 6th, is going to be the Dixieland Art Festival. That's our ninth year, and that's going to be located at the Dixieland Mall behind Concord Coffee and the Trophy Shop. Beautiful area, got shaded trees, and the nursery will be there to give out free plants and represent the new plants that we're going to be putting in the neighborhood. We also have lots of vendors, kids' activities, and lots of good giveaways and raffles. So come on and grab a plant and have a good time. Thank you.
We appreciate you doing that monthly. Well, we are into the proclamation zone, and you will find that April is a big proclamation month. So we will begin with Kelly Lane. Kelly, where are you? Oh, there you are. I just didn't see you back there, sorry. Who is the Director of Development for Boys and Girls Clubs of Polk County. This is the proclamation, and young people, just come right up here as well. You can hold it. You stay up here as well. Thank you. Children's abilities, self-esteem, and dreams can be nurtured through the provision of supportive programs and a healthy and stimulating environment which contribute to their future development, well-being, and prosperity. The Boys and Girls Club of Polk County, Lakeland, will celebrate National Boys and Girls Club Week along with some other 4,300 other clubs and 4 million young people worldwide. The Boys and Girls Club organizations in our community help ensure that our young people keep off the streets, offering them a safe and supportive place to go, and providing them with quality programs. Another mentoring program in our community that does fabulous work. So congratulations.
Thank you very much for recognizing Boys and Girls Club Week. The PAL presentation was so encouraging. There is certainly no shortage of need in our community, and Boys and Girls Club is proud to be a part of those programs that work to combat the negative influences on our youth. You may have noticed, I'll just mention real quickly, that we are now recognized as Boys and Girls Clubs of Polk County versus Boys and Girls Clubs of Lakeland and Mulberry. We are real excited about what the merging of the organizations within Polk County will do for our Lakeland youth. Thank you so much.
Next, we are going to look at Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we'll have Kathy Southern and Amanda Wilson of the Department of Children and Families and Heartland for Children come forward. And anyone else you'd like to have come with you. It can be bigger and larger. Okay. All right, so here we go.
Thank you.
The City of Lakeland is home to over 25,000 children that deserve to live and grow in healthy, safe, and nurturing environments. Research shows safe and nurturing relationships and stable environments improve brain development and child well-being. During the month of April, Prevent Child Abuse Florida's campaign engages public and private sector agencies, early learning professionals, businesses, advocates for children and youth, and residents throughout the state in activities promoting awareness of healthy child development and positive parenting practices, because prevention remains the best defense for our children.
Thank you so much. We wanted to, I brought it as props to show you. So during the month of April, Child Abuse Prevention Month, the Pinwheels for Prevention Campaign takes a simple child's tool, a pinwheel, to remind us that every child deserves a healthy and happy childhood, and also reminds us that we all have a role to play. And so part of that campaign is pinwheel gardens and pinwheel displays that we will have blanketing our community, as well as parenting guides and advocacy guides, which our kind mayor is holding up for us today. So each of you Commissioners has a packet, and there is also an advocacy guide, which goes into what each of us can do. There's lots of information in there about how we can each support parents, support programming like the Boys and Girls Club and PAL and other childcare facilities, parenting programs. If we come together as a community and we all play our role, we will keep children safe and provide help before harm occurs. That's really our goal this month.
Excellent. So if you goes back, we're going to walk up here to this little line, come together to the right a little bit, and take a picture. All right, next, we will have our Community Development Week Declaration, and that will involve the housing staff with the City of Lakeland, and those who are part of that, come forward, please. Is any of you going to give the proclamation? All right. Thank you, great staff. The Community Development Block Grant Program, the CDBG, has operated since 1974 to provide local governments with the resources required to meet the needs of persons of low and moderate income. In Lakeland and in communities throughout the nation, 41 years of CDBG program funding has developed a strong network of relationships between the city, residents, and nonprofit agencies that provide services and help make possible our commitment to those neighborhoods. The Home Investment Partnership Program provides funding to local communities to create decent, safe, affordable housing opportunities for low-income persons. Local government support sends a strong message to Congress and the general public of the accomplishments of the CDBG and home programs, and illustrates the important role it plays in ensuring the viability of our cities.
Good afternoon. With me today, my name is Annie Gibson. I have the staff, Jenna, Michael, Adina, and Philip. And now standing with us is our new appointed boss, Teresa Mayo. But I just want to thank the City Management and the City Commission for supporting the affordable housing programs for the City of Lakeland.
Thank you very much, and thanks for all you all do every day. So let's go up to this little line, we're going to take a picture. Next, we are going to take a look at the Proclamation for Crime Victims Rights Week. And this will, receiving this will be Chief Ruben Garcia, Assistant Chief Sam, say you learn, no. Lieutenant Ed Kane, Lanice Wardell, Deborah Leonard, and any others, yes, coming forward. So I'll let you hold this, sir. Thank you so much for being up here. Right this way, and I'll just kind of read an overview. Americans are the victims of more than 20 million crimes each year affecting individuals and communities. Providing victims with knowledge of their rights and available services strengthens their ability to recover. Victims who feel understood and supported are more likely to disclose their victimization, seek services, and participate in the justice system. National Crime Victims Rights Week is an opportune time to commit to ensuring all victims of crime are offered appropriate services in the aftermath of those crimes. The Lakeland Police Department is hereby dedicated to serving victims, building trust, and restoring hope for justice and healing. Would you like to go make a few comments, sir?
Sure, thank you. Oftentimes, long after the police department, or police officers has come and gone from working those crimes, it's these ladies that try to find some closure for those victims. So we certainly appreciate all they do. And Lieutenant Ed Kane supervised that unit, I'm happy to say a little word.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners alike, for recognizing Crime Victims Week. Each of us in the community can take an opportunity to feel comforted in knowing that we have a fine staff here at the Lakeland Police Department, providing services 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Lanice Wardell is our supervisor, and Deborah Leonard, they are full-time victim advocates. And we also have an army of volunteers that all pitch in to provide that service 365 days out of the year. And it's a pleasure working with each of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you make a comment on the gratification that it might give you doing what you're doing?
Speaking of the whole team, we take each and every victim in our hands, and we care for them just as they are our family, just as they were our mothers, our fathers, our sisters, our brothers, as well as our close friends. And it just absolutely fills your heart to know that you are making a difference in a person's life, and once they come in contact with you, they always seem to come back, and that's what makes you know that you've done a very good job.
Awesome. Thank you. Again, thank you each and everyone. Next, we are going to Donate Life Month proclamation, and this will be Debbie Ismer coming forward. Debbie, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
And you can give that to someone up front, who will be glad to take a picture there. Sit in the front row anymore, you have to know how to use a phone. One of the most meaningful gifts that a human being can bestow upon another is the gift of life. More than 33,000 Americans receive a life-saving organ transplant every year. There are more than 114,000 men, women, and children currently on the national waiting list for organ transplantation, of which approximately 5,800 are in the West and Southwest Florida area. On average, 20 people die every day awaiting an organ transplant that does not come in time. One organ, tissue, and eye donor can save or enhance the lives of as many as 75 people. Everyone is a potential organ, eye, and tissue donor, and can register their wish to save lives by signing up on the Florida's Organ and Tissue Donor Registry. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I personally am a living kidney donor recipient. I had a friend, I'm a nurse from Tampa General, and I have a good friend there that gave me one of her kidneys. So living donation is very good. Deceased donation helps so many, so many people. My husband has a heart transplant also from Tampa General, and we don't know his donor family, and we're grateful to all donors, whether they're deceased donors or whether they're the living donation. So we just want to say thank you, and because April is Donate Life Month, we would encourage everyone to consider being an organ donor.
And what, how can they register and do that?
Well, they can register at www.donatelifeflorida.org. And as far as driver's licenses, Florida is very well-received by driver's license bureaus. They have all been trained. Organ recipient volunteers or donor volunteers, however they, however they want to do it, to be a donor at LifeLink, we go to driver's license bureaus and we educate them, and we put a lot into them, and they're very receptive. And they're able to answer questions that might come up during someone renewing their driver's license. And so you can go online, and you can talk to, your family is the most important thing. The family knowing your wishes is actually the most important thing. Being on the driver's license is good, signing up online, all those are great. But the most important thing is making sure that your closest loved ones know your wishes.
That's a good order.
Yes. And thank you so much to everybody out there that is an organ and tissue donor.
Thank you. Let's take a picture.
Appreciate it this time so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Fair Housing Month, and here to receive that are Jeff Bagwell and Omar Matos.
Matos.
Matos. Omar Matos, sorry, Omar. Jeff, great to see you. Here's that proclamation. And thank you, you guys, you've awesome work all the time and have done it for decades. April 2019 marks the 51st, 51st anniversary of the signing of the Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act, which guarantees fair housing opportunities for all Americans. The United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, concerned citizens, and the housing industry are working to realize the dream of fair and affordable housing for all residents. The City of Lakeland is proud of its efforts to further fair housing for all residents, and recognizes that this can only be accomplished through forging partnerships with individuals, both profit and nonprofit organizations, the corporate community, and others. And by supporting and promoting fair housing and equal opportunity, we are contributing to the health of our city, county, state, and nation, and encouraging others to abide by the letter and spirit of the Federal Fair Housing Act. And I will tell you, Keystone Challenge does all of that and goes beyond that in the way that they attend to the needs of people. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it all started here 28 years ago, the Coleman Bush Building, and I remember one of the first meetings I was in, we talked about fair housing. Strong fair housing means strong communities. And since that time, we've, Mayor, we've had over 20,000 people attend our classes where we talk fair housing. But your Housing Division, I'm so glad they were here today, that's where it all starts. Your Housing Division has been so supportive over the years. We've just seen some great things happen there, and wanted to tell you, we have a class coming up in a couple of weeks at Simpson Park, want to invite you to that. And if you do come to that, you're going to hear about fair housing. Fair housing, again, has to be number one on the agenda, and we're just so fortunate to be in this great city of Lakeland, Florida. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Picture. Next, we have Parent Alienation Awareness Day, and Danica Fields is coming forward for this presentation, along with Executive Director, who is Executive Director of Kids Need Both. There you go. Danica, hold that. Alienating behaviors are often found in high-conflict divorce and custody situations that deprive children of their right to love and to be loved by both parents. Parent alienation is considered harmful to children, and the tactics used are confusing, frightening, and they rob children of their sense of security, and can affect them into adulthood with tragic consequences. With awareness and education of this issue comes the power to stop the abuse of innocent children caught in the crossfire of the people that they love. And all of us probably have some examples in our own minds of scenarios where we have seen that take place and the pain that comes from it. So thank you so much for being a part of that.
Thank you so much. Every year, you all recognize it. It's important. You know, I think most of us have somebody in our lives that, that is, comes from a broken home where the parents are not together. And, and with Kids Need Both, I started Kids Need Both in 2004 as an effort to educate those impacted by the hot conflict families. And today, this is Lillian Blessing, she's on, she's one of my, members of my board. Thank you for coming, and all of the other support. Just wanted to let you know that up, that in the years that I have been, I've had this organization, we, this year in particular, we served 1,253 individuals. We have two classrooms, one in Castleberry, one in Lakeland, and we just took on an affiliate partner, Dr. Sally Stone, and she's And she's teaching the Lakeland classes. And we've expanded, not only are we teaching the co-parenting class that every parent has to go through who's going through custody situations in court, but we're, we have expanded it to a high conflict intervention program that, that the judges can send parents who are just not getting along and they're seeing the children suffer. So, yeah, we're, we're up to making big inroads. In fact, we're partnering with 23 organizations across the planet for an international parental alienation awareness day. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate it very much.
But I want to say something too. When I met Danica, after a while, she started having an eye conflict situation. And I'm really proud of what she has done with that experience, what she has taken to help other families heal.
Awesome. Thank you very much. That brings us to Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And Patty Allison from the Communications Center Manager with our EC is coming up with her team members. So, Sally, you will, or Patty, I'm sorry, you will get this. And team members. We're going to go over here because they're white. Not as individuals.
Okay, my name's Patty Allison. I'm the manager of the 911 Communications Center. They call it National Telecommunicator Week, but that's a fancy way to say 911 dispatcher. This is one of my supervisors that's been, all of them have been here longer than I have. This is Shanna Lucas, Susan Stanton, Ashley, I've been here six months, Alicia West, I knew that. Julie Brown, and my training coordinator, Tina Wyatt. Now, I've known her with two different last names, so this one's Tina Wyatt. And of course, you guys know our chief, Ruben Garcia, and our commanding captain, Hans Lehman. So, I did good with that. And this is the mayor.
All right. So, emergencies can occur at any time that requires police, fire, or emergency medical services. The safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Lakeland Police Fire Emergency Communication Center. Emergency communication specialists are the lifeline for people calling for help and who work tirelessly, often behind the scenes, contributing substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and the treatment of patients. The City of Lakeland wishes to recognize our emergency communication specialists who exhibit compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job, which is very stressful and you handle it very calmly. Thank you very much. Let's give them a round of applause. Do you ever want to make any other comments at all?
The chief always gets to talk, so I get to this stuff. I'd just like to say, first of all, this group of people, they're, I like to call them uniquely phenomenal people. And I don't just say that because I'm one of those uniquely phenomenal people, but I say it because this group specifically, and the ones still at work today, have answered in 2018 over 250,000 calls for service from the citizens of this city. And if you can imagine, they're doing all that while multitasking, while, while problem solving, and they're doing it with the utmost compassion. And, and they rely on each other so much, they have this unique ability to do the right thing and be there for each other in times when they're hard. And some of those hard times have been in the last six months. We've gone through some growing pains. Apparently, there's a new manager there and she's requiring some different stuff. And this group, I kind of asked some of them to come along because of what they do. This is a group that I've asked a little bit more of lately. There are some of, just some of, are certified training officers. And when I first got there, I met with my training coordinator, Tina over there, who's kind of hiding because she has on jeans on a Monday, but I'm not going to point that out to anybody. But, well, and she is, she is at Sun 'n Fun. She's working there, so let me point that out. But anyway, we, we met and came up with a plan to not make Lakeland PD industry standard of having an understaffed 911 center. And you can Google anytime, 911 is, is historically understaffed all the time. And back in November, we did the numbers and Lakeland was a little bit understaffed. We were at 40% understaffed or undertrained. So, we developed a plan and we fought about the plan and we met about the plan. And then we fought with the supervisors about the plan. And then we met about the plan. And it went on and on for a few months. And we developed a plan. And I would like our training coordinators or our training officers here to know that by the end of May, that plan will have cut our understaffing down in half. We'll be at almost 23% instead of 40%. And then by November of this year, we'll be at 10% if we stay on our plan. So, encourage your people, work them hard. They work hard. And not only do they do everything we mentioned and the mayor mentioned about how hard they work, the training officers, they do that with someone sitting about six inches from them, asking them everything they're doing. And they have to document all that. So, our training officers don't get the recognition they need. So, I thought I'd use this opportunity to say thank you. You guys are awesome and keep doing what you're doing. And these are the future of 911.
Well, you guys do go above and beyond. I have a personal experience. Just last week, I was showing someone how on the iPhone, you, it can dial 911. And I actually went too far and it went over and I slid it right back. So that, you know, to stop it? I got a call from the department, double checking on, was there a problem that fast? And it just, it's amazing. Not only is there an inbound side to this, but the outbound side, just for verification. So, that's, first of all, I apologize to whoever that was. And secondly, I appreciate all that you do. Let's give them a round of applause. This is Water Conservation Month. And here to receive the proclamation is Ruffin Gray, Manager of the Water Utilities Compliance Division for the City of Lakeland. So, thank you. Water is a basic and essential need of every living creature. And boy, is it something we take for granted. The state of Florida Water Management Districts in the City of Lakeland are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. The City of Lakeland and the state of Florida has designated April, typically a dry month when water demands are most acute, Florida's Water Conservation Month to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's water conservation and to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. And 2019 is the 21st anniversary of Water Conservation Month. The City of Lakeland has always encouraged and supported water conservation through various educational programs and special events. Every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water, thus promoting a healthy economy and community. We have to have a little bit of guilt when we let that faucet run a little bit too long. So, comments?
In the proclamation, you mentioned April being the month where more water is used. And on average, we use about 2 million gallons more per day. So, that's 60 million gallons in April that we use more. So, that's, I mean, that's a phenomenal number. So, we need to all look for ways to do our part. And I am responsible for the mystery purple bag that was on your chairs when you came in. And there are some conservation items that you'll find in there. And I'm going to give Cindy an opportunity to say something since she came to be with us today.
Thank, I thank you, Ruffin, for inviting me along. I'm Cindy Rodriguez. I'm Government Affairs Manager for the Water Management District. So, as you can imagine, this is a proclamation that is of high interest to me. I want to thank the City Commissioners, Mayor, city leadership for being such great partners with the district every year and bringing awareness of the importance of water conservation. Ruffin is absolutely right. This is a month where we use a lot of water because it's a little drier than normal. In fact, April, May, and June are typically the highest water use months nationwide until we get into our normal summer rainy pattern when we don't feel the need to go out and turn on our irrigation systems and that sort of thing. So, it's a great time to remind everybody to think about that. So, I just have one audience participation question. And there's only two answers. It's inside the home or outside the home. You guys get to play too. So, where do we, where do you see the greatest water loss? How many of you think it's inside the home? Dishwashers, washing machines, leaky toilets, okay? How many think it's outside the home? Ding ding ding, you winners. It is outside the home. So, if you're a water nerd girl like me, like I've turned into, when we, when I watched the Powell presentation, I had a number of great takeaways. But two of them were this. A, they did a great car wash and they raised a boatload of money for the organization. So, that was a good thing. But you know what else they did? What? No, they actually had a shut-off valve, a shut-off nozzle on the end of that hose. And if you're a water nerd like me, you notice those things. So, hats off to Powell, not only for raising a lot of money for that organization, but also for doing it the right way and conserving water while they were at it.
All right.
Excellent. So, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And you may not have seen on some of the city websites, the opportunity to participate in April for water conservation and actually allow Lakeland to become a winning city in the, in the process of that. And you may even wonder, what am I talking about? But there is a website this month, wwwwaterpledge.com, that you can go to and take a four-step conservation pledge. All of us can do this. Why would we do this? Because we actually, you can win prizes and the city can win a national recognition and prize as well for having just participated based on the numbers of people that go to this website, register, and then on a per capita basis, it is decided. And there's categories of cities. We participate in the 100,000, 199,000 category city in terms of population. But participants in the winning cities are eligible to win hundreds of prizes. Last year, the challenge awarded more than $50,000 in prizes to nearly 300 residents in U.S. cities. Most importantly, participants to see the enormous impact that they could have on their community by taking simple water actions. So, this is wwwmywaterpledge, mywaterpledge.com. Every one of us should register on that site and it will all go, go towards the opportunity for not only you individually to win an award, but for Lakeland to win recognition as we go forward.
All right.
So, that ends, all right. That ends our presentations and proclamations. All right. So, we will go to committee reports and related items. And the first will be a Real Estate and Transportation Committee report by Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. The Real Estate and Transportation Committee met at the City Commissioner's Conference Room. Commissioner Bill Reed, Trustor Troller. President Commissioner Walker was out of town. Mayor Mutz, Franklin, and Madden were present along with staff and the media. Commissioner Reed called the meeting to meet at order 8:05 a.m. The purpose was to lease, between the lease agreement between the City of Lakeland and GOMED LLC to lease 1,276 square feet of interior space in the Magnolia Building, basement, and 500 square feet of exterior patio space to operate the Garden Briscoe, a food and beverage concession in the Magnolia Building. The term of the lease will be for a five-year period commencing April 1, 2019, upon approval by the City Commission. Annual rent with the lease premise will total $16,095.12 or $1,341.26 per month, in addition to applicable sales tax and a first-year lease. Thereafter, rent, the lease will be adjusted annually in accordance with the Consumer Price Index and the urban consumer with a not-to-exceed increase of 5% per year. Pursuant to the lease, GOMED will be required to maintain a high quality of food and beverage service with the city retaining the rights to approve the menu contents for the Garden Briscoe. GOMED would be required to operate the Briscoe for a minimum of 30 hours per week with the option to extend hours upon approval by the city. Additional GOMED would, GOMED would go to require, obtain all the licenses permits necessary to operate the restaurant, as well as maintain insurance coverage as required by the agreement. The city would be responsible for the payment of the utilities and structural repairs and improvements to the building. Staff recommended the commission approve the appropriate city officials to execute a lease with GOMED LLC. Commissioner Troller moved to approve the recommendation. Commissioner Reed seconded and the motion carried unanimously. The meeting adjourned at 8:08 a.m. It's a very short and concise meeting.
You were efficient, sir. So, is there a motion?
motion to approve.
Motion to approve and a second. Discussion? Any discussion by the audience? Voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. That will bring us to Commissioner Troller to give a municipal boards and committees report.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this one was probably a little bit more efficient than the real estate and transportation one. I call, the municipal boards and committees met in the City Commission Conference Room. Myself as chair, Mayor Mutz were present. Commissioner Carle was absent. Also, present were Commissioners Reed, Franklin, and Madden, along with city staff and the media. I called the meeting to order at 8:09 a.m. to act upon three recommendations. One was from Jim Denny for Code Enforcement Board to appoint Thomas Gage to serve the remainder of an unexpired term beginning April 1, 2019 and ending May 31, 2020. Mr. Gage will replace Gilia DeVries. Another recommendation from Jim Denny to appoint William Wainwright to the remainder of an unexpired term beginning April 1, 2019 and ending October 31, 2021. Mr. Wainwright was an alternate. He will be replacing Dana Kelly as a regular member. A recommendation from Mayor Mutz for the Nuisance Abatement Board to reappoint David Duncan to additional three-year term beginning retroactive to February 16, 2019 and ending February 15, 2022. Mayor Mutz moved to approve the recommendations. I concurred and the motion carried unanimously. The meeting adjourned at 8:11 a.m.
So, that was a two-minute meeting?
That's right.
And so, it was actually more efficient. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. One of the ladies, that's right. Discussion? Any discussion by the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. That brings us to the approval of the Consent Agenda, which includes the minutes as well as under City Attorney, Item 6C, 1 and 2, those first two miscellaneous reports.
May I make a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Second.
All right. Discussion? Any discussion by the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same. Unanimously approved. We'll recess as a city commission and then we will come together as an equalization board and the lots and clearing report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Periodically, the city commission sits as the equalization board and its purpose is to hear the fairness of special assessment liens that are being considered to be imposed on people's property. So, if you've been noticed to appear this afternoon for this hearing, this is your opportunity to speak to the city commission. Notice of assessments against property for lot cleaning and clearing. Notice is hereby given that assessments have been entered against the following lots and parcels of land in the City of Lakeland, Florida, provided by Chapter 86 of the Code. The City of Lakeland, Florida, said assessments being payable within 30 days with interest at the rate of 8% per annum, here and after specifically set forth.
All right. Are there approval and a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion? Are there, is anyone present that would like to discuss any one of those items? Okay. All right.
That's being efficient.
So, no discussion within the audience? This would be voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. And that ends our equalization hearing and we re-adjourn as a commission. That'll take us to public hearings. A, ordinance, second reading, City Attorney McCaslin.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. The first item would be proposed, ordinance number 19-007, an ordinance related to public right-of-way vacating certain public right-of-way located south and west Second Street, east of Omaha Hunter Avenue, west of North Webster Avenue within the City of Lakeland, Florida, authorizing recording of a certified copy of this ordinance.
Roll call vote, Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Aye.
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 The next item is, excuse me.
19-008.
Town Park Community. Right, an ordinance to city commission, the City of Lakeland, Florida, related to community development districts, amending ordinance 5476 to expand the boundaries of Town Park Community Development District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes adopting findings, providing severability, providing an effective date.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion for approval and a second. Discussion by commission? Discussion by the audience? Seeing none, Commissioner Franklin?
Aye.
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 Yes.
The next item is proposed resolution number 19-020. This is the first of two public hearings that are required on the brownfield designation for the stated property. The next one will occur at the, at the next city commission meeting, which will be the final action. That would be proposed resolution number 19-020, resolution city commission, the City of Lakeland, Florida, designating property located south of East Lake Park, or East Parker Street, north of East Myrtle Street, east of North Stella Avenue, and west of Northlake Avenue as a brownfield area, authorizing the city attorney to notify the Florida Department of Environmental Protection of said designation, providing for severability, providing an effective date. Mr. Mayor, if you could please ask for public comment.
Are there any public comments related to this? I see none. All right.
Once again, that will be brought back to the next city commission meeting on the 15th for final action.
There's no community redevelopment agency report and, Commissioner Reed?
Should, should we just briefly have Tim tell us what a brownfield is, some people that live in that neighborhood?
That's an excellent idea.
Would not be concerned as not contained, they decide?
Correct, the, the multiple purposes of, there you go.
This is common in the development business to request designation as a brownfield area. DEP has a program where if you get to receive this designation from the local government that, that you get special tax breaks on the, on the, I think, construction materials that are purchased to improve the site. It started related to, to contaminated property, but it's since expanded significantly to, to be much broader and is, is really just perceived as a development tool that, that encourages the development. So that is a brownfield that doesn't necessarily stigmatize the property as being contaminated. It's just by definition, property in the CRA is eligible for brownfield, so.
Because it provides an opportunity to remove it from a constrained scenario. All right, Commissioner Madden?
I liked when Elise pointed out that blight was a characterization of brownfield, just contamination, I think.
When I was referring to the statute, that's what I meant.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. That's correct. We did have that discussion in the agenda study that blighted conditions generally would be considered those that are non-desirable for a community and it is a redevelopment tool, as Mr. McCoslin pointed out.
Right, so that there's no other concerns. I appreciate that, Commissioner Reed, for bringing that out and thank you very much, Elise. That brings, there is no community redevelopment agency report, otherwise Elise would have stayed up there. And so that takes us to city manager, A.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. There's three items under the city managers portion for your review and approval, the first being a construction manager at risk services agreement for Cypress East Sports Complex Phase 2. The sports complex is a 33-acre park located at 2125 East Edgewood Drive. The park currently has four multipurpose fields, two of those which are lighted, a restroom facility, parking, and maintenance building. Phase 2 of the project will include construction of two additional multipurpose fields and additional parking. Those fields will not be lighted at this point in time. The city issued a RFQ in December of 2018 to obtain qualifications, submittals from firms experienced in professional construction management with the guaranteed maximum price for construction of the complex. One submittal was received by Rada Construction, Inc., purchasing sent a notice of intent to ward to Rada on January 14, 2019. Funds for the construction of Phase 2 are currently budgeted in this fiscal year's Public Improvement Fund and our Parks and Recreation Impact Fees for the District 2 area. The total budget is $750,000. It is being recommended that the city commission authorize the appropriate city officials to commence contract negotiations with Rada Construction for the not-to-exceed price of $750,000.
Move.
Second.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Discussion by Commissioners? Discussion by the public? Is a voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same. Unanimously passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The second item is a mid-year table of organization modifications, appropriations, and increase in our estimated revenues to associated with those. Annually, request arise from departments to make modifications to their table of organization. These modifications may involve adding, deleting, pay adjustments, or reclassifying of positions to meet the departmental needs, operational needs, and to improve, improve service delivery to meet our specific city strategic goals. The following additions have been proposed to the city's table of organization with their estimated fiscal year 2019 budget impacts. I'll go through these really quickly, the first being the account, adding an accounting clerk 2 in the customer billing area funded by the parking fund. The cost to the parking fund would be $25,223. This allows for customers to have one place to either call or visit when inquiring about their, and paying parking violations. It centralizes and provides backup for the backup office processing of online and in-person parking violations. The second item is adding one police officer to the police department's table of organization, which is 100% funded as a college resource officer by Florida Southern College. Florida Southern is covering the full cost of the vehicle, equipment, and officer for the remainder of this year, fiscal year, at $142,770. The third item is adding four school resource officer positions to the police department's table of organization. The fiscal year 19 costs of vehicles, equipment, and personnel totals $415,811. City is currently in discussions with the Polk County School Board to begin funding these officers at the same 75% level as other school resource officers for the upcoming school year and fiscal, which takes place in fiscal year 19 and 20. The third item, excuse me, the fourth item is Officer Support Specialist 2 in the community economic development area. The cost of the general fund is $24,310 after the elimination of a part-time contract labor position within the budget. Community and, and, a community and engagement coordinator will also be established in our community and economic development department and removal of one college intern to offset those costs. These, these costs will be shared by community and economic development, the CRA, and the CDBG. And that cost to the general fund, CRA and CDBG funds is $11,052, $10,342, and $2,955 respectively. In our, in our pension division, the general employees pension fund traditionally has operated with four full-time officers, I mean employees, excuse me. During the implementation of our PeopleSoft pension system, over the last few years, the pension fund has covered the cost of the employee assisting in the, that implementation while operating with three employees. It's our recommendation that we now hire that additional pension fund benefit assistant. This person will be funded directly from the general employees pension fund at a cost of $29,549. There are other reductions and eliminated positions that net out against the above noted increases to create the requested appropriation from these funds. Therefore, it's being requested that the city commission authorize the appropriation and increase in the estimated revenues from the unappropriated surpluses of the funds noted below, those being the general fund at $330,892, the parking fund at $25,223, downtown CRA at $7,472, midtown CRA at $938, and the Dixieland CRA at a whopping $119.
All right, motion?
Motion to approve. Move to approve.
Motion and a second, all right. And discussion by Commissioners. Yes, Commissioner Reed?
Thank you. For the most part, I don't have any problem with these. There again, I think we need to have some dialogue with the school board. It's kind of like an unfunded mandate per se to try to, so I, I think we need to have some additional dialogue. Again, I'd like to see this, not just a sunset per se, but we need to get funded forever. We need to let them know that this is a temporary thing, in my opinion.
Commissioner, they are aware of it. When we started talking with them and the school board, they are aware that we were covering this because of budgetary constraints on their part this current fiscal year and it just goes through the end of this current school calendar as well as summer school. So obviously, we're talking with them today, both the chief and myself, trying to make sure that it's covered under the same parameters that all the other SORO officers are covered, which is 75-25% moving into next year.
Thank you.
And I think that was a good discussion brought up by Commissioner Troller and Commissioner Franklin commented on it as well during the agenda study. So we have to kind of think of this year as being the year we protect our students as the city's investment, but not an ongoing expectation as we would hope going forward. Commissioner Walker?
Reed is okay, I'll take it.
Yeah, Reed, Reed, Walker, same thing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that's a question I had, too, but of course, not being part of the discussion on Friday, being out of town as I was, I'm certainly, I can appreciate my colleagues, you all sharing, as you have shared, about the addition expense on our part. But of course, I know, I look at, safety is so important for all of us, for our children, and schools and all of them, in hopes of the conversation moving forward with Mr. Bird and, and the school board will be a positive, positive way of saying, hey, this is being done because we know it's needed. Certainly, we appreciate your support moving to, into the next school year, beginning in the fall of this year, if I hear correct. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Troller?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, my, my colleagues are on the same page as I am in regards to where the obligation lies. I understand that there are some folks out there that think we just waste money moving monuments and, but don't want to protect our students, which is the furthest from the truth. I'm assuming that we took this expense on, at our own direction to cover for this school year and not as a request from the school board, is that correct?
No, we took it on in our own direction. I mean, a lot of it was because of the operational necessities. We come to find after the Marjory Stoneman Act was, was implemented that just trying to cover schools, especially when officers are already onsite and having to be removed to, to handle investigation and those type of things. The Marjory Stoneman Act required that somebody always be in place, so we were really pulling people off the street, primarily in our traffic division, in order to offset those, those needs. So in discussions with both chiefs, prior Chief Giddens and Chief Garcia, we felt that this was a good opportunity for us to go ahead and beef up our, our, our team in order to be, be able to meet those mandates. But we've also had conversations with superintendent about the need as we move forward.
Right, and so for, for those folks out there that, you know, the city took upon itself to, to fund for the remainder of the school year. And I also think that we, we do have a good partnership with the school board, however, when opportunities like this present themselves, the 75-25 also represents our commitment that even throughout the summer, some of our SROs are still working in schools. And so we are still contributing our 25%, whether our SRO is there for the 75% of the time, nine months, or throughout the summer. And so.
It's smaller contingent, but you're.
I get it, but so we, we do our fair share. We recognize that we serve the same taxpayers and so I believe the safety of our students comes first, but I'm glad our conver, the conversation is moving forward in regards to the obligation to perform the duties that you're responsible for. And so we look forward to help in any way that we can, but when it's at this type of level, when we have other financial constraints, it's important that we do what's best for our taxpayers and, and the same for, for our other government agencies. So this is kudos to the city for taking a step, proactive step in funding student safety for the remainder of the school year at our own request.
Any other comments, questions? All right, any from the audience? Okay, all those, this is voice, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same. Unanimously passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The last item is a recommendation from our Lakeland Lender International Airport to contract with Amherst Consulting to design the rehabilitation of taxiways A, B, and C. Those taxiways at the airport are starting to show signs of distress in reaching their collective payment design, pavement design life. Each of the taxiways was last constructed in early 2000 and these taxiways provide access to the north side of the airfield. Rehabilitation of these taxiways had initially been programmed for funding next fiscal year, fiscal year 20. However, the Federal Aviation Administration had advised our airport that the project will be funded this fiscal year. The FAA has requested that the airport proceed with design through bidding phase of the project to determine the actual bid construction cost. Based on the engineering design of the, of the pavement, the FAA will issue a grant covering their share, which is 90% of the total cost. Florida Department of Transportation will, however, issue their funding next fiscal year as originally scheduled for 5% of the total cost. The airport advertised this work. Four companies responded to the proposal. The selection committee met and reviewed the engineering proposals and determined that Amherst was the most responsive for the proposed work. Amherst provided the scope and fee at a lump sum fee of $253,100. Staff reviewed the proposal, engaged in engineering firm Cootens and Grow out of Tampa to complete an independent fee estimate. The FAA policy allows for a 10% deviation between the IFE and those proposed costs. The IFE estimate, estimated the fees at $249,040 or 1.6 deviation, which is well within the FAA guidelines. Thus, it's being requested the commission authorize the appropriate city officials to enter into contract with Amherst Consulting to provide this work in the lump sum amount of $253,100. It's also requested the commission authorize an increase in the estimated FAA grant revenue to $227,790 and the corresponding appropriation of $253,100 with the local share being $25,310, which is funded out of our capital surplus at the airport.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move. Second.
Moves in second and discussion by Commissioners? Any discussion by the public? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same. Unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, if I have one quick, quick verbal, I'm very, very excited today to introduce you two and announce that our third member of our city administration team has started work today, Emily Cologne, who's sitting in the third row with next to Sean Charrow, our deputy city manager, a very, very seasoned, young professional, and we're looking forward to her, having her on our team, and I think she's going to do a wonderful job for the City of Lakeland, so.
Great to have you on board.
More importantly, she's going to take work off of mine and show everyone's plate, and we're really excited about that, too.
She's just going to extend your professional load.
That's right.
Okay, that brings us to city attorney ordinances, first reading.
Thank you, welcome, Emily. I've got one item for first reading. The law requires only that I read the title. This will be brought back for final action on 15th and public comment at that time. That would be proposed ordinance number 19-009, ordinance related to zoning, amending ordinance 5182, providing for a modification to PUD zoning to allow a former church located at 240 Furnery Road to be converted to offices for the assisted living facility Grace Manor Suites located at 4620 North Soakrim Loop Road, repealing ordinance 5280, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, providing an effective date. We can bring it back for final action and public comment on the 15th. Resolutions for your consideration, the first would be proposed resolution number 19-021, resolution related to assessments, determine necessity for having cleaned and cleared certain property within the City of Lakeland, providing for the assessment of liens against such property for expenses incurred in the cleaning and clearing thereof, providing an effective date.
All right.
Move for approval.
Second.
And is there a, actually, this is, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right, I apologize. Is, discussion by Commissioners? Any discussion by the audience? Roll call vote, Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Aye.
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 The next item would be proposed resolution number 19-022, resolution related to the arts, amending resolution 5133, modifying designated member organizations for appointment to the mayor's council of the arts, miscellaneous revisions, repealing resolutions 4982 and 5013, making findings, providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I can't make one.
Move for approval.
Okay, very good.
Second.
Second. Second. Discussion?
Yes, sir. Hello, could it, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Question, I've noticed, again, I was a part of discussion on Friday, didn't get to hear a lot of it either, but the Education Enlightenment Group, what happened with that? Why would it have been moved?
They don't fall under the same criteria as some of these arts programs, they are funded out of other areas of property.
They just moved them, they've been moved to another particular category, another area, okay, all right.
And hadn't been participating in this.
For the last year, and as we know, the Education Enlightenment Group, yeah, we found funding in another specific area. The Education Enlightenment Group, as we all know, works very, very hard on Martin Luther King's week, special events, as well as the parade, because they didn't fall under the scope of what this art council funding was, we found another opportunity to progress.
I want to make sure they've been funded somewhere else, and they are, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? When you can be, go ahead.
I was just asking a question about Pope Vision in particular, were they a recipient, or, but no, the, the, sir was just telling me that's not the case.
No, okay. Any comments by the audience? Okay, this is a roll call vote as well, Commissioner Franklin?
Aye.
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 Yes.
Mr. Mayor, before Tim moves on, maybe it'd be good to kind of highlight some things, I know Pope Vision was brought up, the Education Enlightenment Group, there are other areas and other avenues and vehicles within the city for funding special grants to many of these other organizations that some of these questions were about. This one is specifically related to the arts, those other areas are everything from service and visioning funds, those type of things, and there are other places that we do fund those. So I don't want anybody to think that we've cut out anybody through this, and we look at those on an annual basis.
And we have enhanced kind of the input, really, to, of for arts on this. And I'll add to your comment, it's our goal to have this have a little more focus and muscle with respect to what can be produced and recommended for the city's sake on art going forward than we may have done historically. So we're really looking forward to that. Commissioner McCarty sits on that as well, and so it will be fun to have, and you're on that as well, as the city manager, so we appreciate that. Commissioner Madden?
I'm just noticing that it's not necessarily that they're a recipient just because they're on the council, but they're giving perspective, so that RP Funding Center certainly is probably not going to be a beneficiary of the funds, but also provides their building at reduced rates for some of the arts groups.
Correct, and the universities, for example, Southeastern and Harrison and Florida Southern are not going to be recipients, but they have art eyes that we want to have be part of the process. Right, good comments, sir, thank you, appreciate you for the roundout.
Thank you, sir.
That brings us to three. Yes.
Under the miscellaneous portion of my agenda, the third item, first two were on consent. The third item is a proposed contract with Sensate Contractors. This is to replace the flow splitter box at Glendale Treatment Plant that was, it's part of the original equipment, so it's, it's as old as Tiger and I are. And both are, all three of us are experiencing significant structural deterioration. But the water staff is only recommending replacement of the splitter box, so I guess Tiger and I don't get any help. They did an RFP, the lowest responsive bidder was Sensate Contractors from Winter Haven in the amount of $982,000. That's a budgeted item, it's recommended for your approval.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Commissioner Madden and Commissioner Reed, a second. Discussion by commissioners, discussion by the audience. All those, this is a voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, unanimously passes.
Now, the next item is First Amendment to our acquisition and redevelopment agreement with the Framework Group. They are the development, the developer on thirteen acres north of the fire station, what we call the fire station site. This amendment is just to reduce the number of units from three oh five to three oh six. The agreement determined the price per, for the property as a price per unit, so that would also reduce the purchase price by $12,000 to $3,660,000. That's recommended for your approval.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve, and a second from Commissioner Franklin, discussion. Commissioner Troller?
Yeah, so this is, I think, this is a reduction from three hundred and six units to three hundred and five units, I believe, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Reed?
Thank you. I've had numerous people ask when it was going to close, and I think from my understanding, it was meant to close in May of this year. I guess due to shutdown of the government back in January, it's been extended to have the option of three months, three thirty-day extensions, and so it would close at the latest August first and turn dirt in September, is that correct?
Good afternoon, commissioners, at least drum go, CRA staff. They actually have, it's built into the contract for four thirty days, so our initial agreement was signed in November of seventeen, so it's November twenty-first, the date was recorded, we have to close within eighteen months of that timeframe, so May twenty-first would be the end of the initial contract, and then we would get into the extensions from that point forward. So the latest date would be September twenty-first.
Thank you.
Sure.
With extensions?
That's correct, with all extensions.
With extensions, I'm ready to go.
So September twenty-first will be the closing, or dirt would be turned September twenty-first?
So that's the, that's the latest date that we can close, and then thirty days thereafter, within that thirty-day period. So approximately October twenty-first would be the latest that they would have to turn dirt on the site.
Thank you.
Sure.
So it will be in this calendar year to their relief. All right, any other discussion or questions, comments, any from the audience? Okay, this is a voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, unanimously passes. There are no reports from the finance director, but we appreciate your joining us, and.
Just glad to be here, sir.
And that gives us an opportunity for audience participation.
He's glad to be here.
Seeing none, that gives us an opportunity for commissioner comments. Commissioner Walker? You're up first.
One of my favorite weeks of the year, we have fun, hopefully the rain will pass on through, but get out there and see the show and support aviation education. So it's a great opportunity to have fun and support a very, very worthy cause at the same time.
Great weekend, Lakeland.
Right.
Commissioner Walker?
As you know, I've been traveling again, so this past week, of course, being a part of the FLC legislative days, I think one or two were with me last, we were together last year this time, but it came through spring break time, so I know it kind of maybe have dampened some of the attendance. But we had a good turnout, I was able to have some one-on-one conversations as part of what I know we, I want to make sure our policy statement is as shared as we already done, of course, prior to the session time starting with our local delegation, and I was able to see, I think, every one of them or their aide, except representative Tom Cowan, didn't get a chance to get around there in time. Last week was such a busy week, and I'm sure, I shared it with some others, you know, it was such a busy week with committee meetings, until just scrambling trying to get to see everyone, and because it could have been in committee meetings and such, but when you know how to get around and make some connections, we were able to catch them before they got to the meeting, so I was glad that it happened. One of the things I think, two, well, I think I want to share three or four things that I think you all should be aware of, and if you've been following the different bills that have been going through the process. The CRA bill has finally got an amendment, Senator Lee did amend what he, how the original bill had started out, so I think with the amendment that's moving forward now, FLC has said they would, it was more likely for us to accept, as cities, municipal government, so that was good. And also, the Attorney Fees and Costs Bill, the amendment, there was an amendment going forward for that particular bill as well, that hopefully when we see that we can approve this, what we say with the municipal government's approvals. Affordable housing was one that really got a lot of attention, I think we were sharing with our legislative delegation from all over, those of us that are from the state, from the state, all over the state, making sure that those monies that come from the Sodasty Funds are geared and directed for what they need to be done with, of course, and that is to make sure those monies utilized for affordable housing, or housing that's affordable, as we may call it. And one of the things I think that was very critical, too, was the water funding, how the house side and the city side, funding was almost synonymous in some respect. So we saw funding being directed and should pass without a problem with that as well. So good visit, day and a half of just, you know, doing whatever due to reinforce and share with our delegation how it's important for them to know, as we always call it, having home rule and let us be able to decide what's best for our citizens at the various cities throughout the state, because we are closer to them than anyone else, being local government. Wanted also to share with you that tomorrow would be the one hundredth birthday of a Vietnam, excuse me, World War II vet. World War II vet tomorrow, Mr. Herman Jenkins, I don't know if you recall, and probably myself and Commissioner Troller may recall him, he received the African-American Black History Month proclamation about two years ago.
He did an article about him, too.
And, yeah, he's going to be a hundred years old tomorrow, there's a big event planned by the family this coming Saturday. Spoke with Congressman Spaino when I was in DC a couple, two, three weeks ago about doing something, and caught him as he was talking, met with the city manager, Mr. Delgado, when he was here, and there's going to be something, you know, that's going to be done on the House floor in DC this week for him, and again, something that he would be setting as well, as a proclamation coming from our city, for Mr. Jenkins, again, turning one hundred years old tomorrow, April second. Can you believe that? Let's keep saying Vietnam, World War II veteran, World War II veteran. Other than that, again, Task Force will be meeting, I think, next Monday. It's our second meeting of the year on the eighth at five o'clock, and we'll be announcing, guess what, whatever particular area of the city that will be going to have our outreach participation. I don't think we've said that yet, have we, Mr. Cook? Has the next one been set yet? I don't think it has.
Pastor Mike has identified two areas, I believe, we're on the side of.
Okay, good, and we'll probably do that, of course, next Monday evening, we meet at five o'clock in the commission's conference chambers. Thank you so very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, that's a full report, Commissioner Madden?
I did want to ask Commissioner Walker about the water, you know, the monies being aired on both sides, did you have hope for seven wetlands?
Well, seven wetlands was what I'd share, because of what we know from our perspective, I did not get a chance to talk with Senator Albretton, but I can say.
He's an advocate.
He spoke very highly of Lakeland. I just happened to be going to his office when I was approached by some other delegation that was there from FLC legislative days, and Lakeland was very highly spoken of by him, because he had so many committees he was involved with on last Tuesday, but I believe, what I understand, that it's moving, I feel like that, I think it's moving, yes.
Commissioner Troller, anything?
No, nothing, sir, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, somewhat to be redundant. There again, I encourage you all to register for www.mywaterpledge.com.
All right.
To get this down so you can maybe win a prize, or we might get something for the city of Lakeland. Also, I encourage our citizens to be a little bit patient. We have a tremendous amount of people coming into towns, flying in today, the flying starts tomorrow, and to go through the week. Also, I encourage our board to go to our board appreciation meal coming up next week, Tiger Town. And last but not least, I'll probably get chastised for this, wish my daughter a happy birthday tomorrow. So, Veronica, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Troller?
Yeah, just one thing I'd like to mention, I know, I don't know, you guys have been approached by folks in regards to the South Florida road diet, but do want to encourage folks to attend that.
Good idea, maybe.
Yeah.
Public meeting, and.
Very good idea.
You know, everyone has their ideas. I think this body, and the previous body, went through great lengths to understand the potential for a reduced corridor, as well as the funding mechanism that's in place to allow it to take place. Recognize that FDOT has a new way to approach roadways, and it's not just for traffic movement, but also for economic development. And so, folks that are out there, I know you, it's crazy to think that we can live with two lanes, one way, one each way, with a suicide lane in the middle, but I would encourage you to attend the meeting. I'm not completely sold on the idea, however, I do believe something has to be done, and a year test will show us the pros and cons of the idea, and then we'll go from there. But until someone has a better idea of how to make that corridor safe, and if you don't think it's, if you think it's safe, I would ask you to just take a walk from the post office and walk down to Board and Bread and close your eyes while you're doing it, and see how you feel, you'll feel the, you'll, you feel like you're in the middle of traffic, is what you'll feel like. So for folks that are critics of the idea, that's totally fine, but please educate yourself on why we're moving in the direction for a test, where the funding is coming from, what the ultimate goal is to achieve at the end, and what the city will be doing to mitigate the pros and the cons of a reduction and a minute delay from, for a mile and a half quarter. So please, attend the meeting, it is April ninth, from four to seven. It's a drop-in meeting, so you can come in at your convenience, at the RP Funding Center.
It's kind of an if not this, then what? Commissioner Madden?
Well, and I just want to add that, you know, it is the truth, you know, when you're hearing about things in the community, you think, you have all the first-time questions, you know, and all of those, you know, oh my gosh, what if this happens? And, you know, we have had a lot more opportunity to go visit other areas where they've done similar road diets. I just went back over to Edgewater Drive a couple weeks ago and felt like it was already, you know, developing even more with more residential areas. It just seemed like all of the little storefronts were filled with little shops and restaurants, and so I know that some would say that it's not the exact, you know, same roadway as Florida, especially in Lakeland, because we've used that as a north-south corridor. But with our businesses so closely, you know, right on the streets, taking into context that FDOT now taking that into context that it's not just a road where you're passing through an area, but it's actually an area where you want to go to.
Right.
That really helped me go, okay, so is that an area that you want our residents to go to and to enjoy and to be able to, like you said, have growth? And for the, I feel like even with CRA, we've done a lot to incentivize businesses to open there, and I think they're really waiting on us to then add that safety component so that they don't have to put their, those who patronize those stores in danger, you know, to go do that. So it is a very residential, walkable area of our town that could really be a gem. So I just hope people, you know, will be patient, and I know the first thing you think about is the congestion or where the traffic will be offloaded. But I really, you know, whether or not it's the exact same as Edgewater Drive or not in Orlando, everything that they promised would happen, a decade later, is happening on that corridor with economic vitality and residential uses, so.
Excellent comments, Commissioner Walker?
I forgot to mention, and I did, I need to make sure, because I got, someone just questioned me quickly here about the presentation that was done by Powell, and thank you to our city manager for making sure he brought that to our attention, too, because we do know it, but it was just not, you know, presented as it should have been. Outside of the $4,000,000 that we see coming from Lakeland PD's budget perspective for Powell's support, there's a couple hundred thousand dollars that's going to come from the general fund as well, and that should have been shared, and then make sure that people listening at sort of presentation know that.